Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting. It's 6:02 PM and we're called to order September 27th, 2022. We always begin every meeting with public comment. Public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes. Any citizen wishing to speak shall identify themselves by name and address and speak for no longer than three minutes. I don't see anyone here this evening for public comments, so I will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is superintendent and chair remarks. I would like to start this evening with our student representatives. Elle O'Connor and Charlie Savage are joining us, and they have been the student reps to the school committee for the last year, and they're going to be continuing with us during this school year. You may notice a bit of a change. They have joined us at the table. Per our, the Mass General Law, it provides that Student Advisory Committee, in our case, the Winchester Student Council, elects chair people or to serve as ex officio members of the school committee. So, we have asked Elle and Charlie to actually join us at the table this year and to participate in the report update and action items. We look forward to hearing their voices in some of the topics that will come before school committee this year. I don't know if either one of you, not going to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to say anything about that or your new expanded role, please feel free to.
I think we all just want to say, like, thank you so much for having us. Doing it last year was definitely just such an honor, and we really are excited by this new position.
Yeah, I think it's definitely an interesting opportunity. More, it's a different way to represent the student body, and I'm really excited to see how this is going to work this year.
And we are excited for you to try out this expanded role with us and hope to get feedback from you on how it's working. I'd just like the committee to know Mr. Brady has offered to, alongside myself, to help mentor Elle and Charlie and understand how our agendas get made and the information comes before them so that they can meaningfully participate in our conversations at the table as well. So, thank you, Mr. Brady, for taking that on with us as well.
Thank you. Very excited to have you both. Thank you.
Thank you. The next thing that I would like to do is to welcome Mr. John Miller to the table. He's here tonight from, would you like to just come up and introduce yourself, Mr. Miller?
Sure. My name's John Miller. I'm a member of FinCom. I'm actually the new vice chair of FinCom, and with that goes the task of heading this education subcommittee. So, we have a group formed. FinCom's looking forward to, and I've already reached out to the superintendent, and we're going to work very cooperatively and a little bit earlier than usual. They try to do our work a little bit earlier and make sure that things go smoothly. And looking forward to a productive year. FinCom has already identified our education subcommittee, so we're looking forward to a very productive and easy, maybe not on some, on, you know, dollar issues, not always easy, but in terms of mechanics, and we want to work very cooperatively and early with the school committee and with superintendent staff. So, looking forward to a good year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us and for stopping by and introducing yourselves.
Yeah, I'm going to hang out a little bit, too.
The committee, yes, and I was going to say, please feel free to stay and look forward to seeing you at future meetings. It always helps to have both school committee and FinCom well informed on school matters. It makes that budget process go a lot easier. So, thank you very much. The next thing on our agenda under communications are school committee roles. You should have each received a copy of the school committee roles in your packet. The only thing that I'm going to highlight here, unless anyone has any questions on that, are a couple of changes that we're making this year. Are you able to pull that up real quick? I'm sorry, I hate to make you wrong.
No, no. I must step soon.
So, we do have just a few changes this year. Mr. Hopcroft has offered to take over from Mr. Brady, who served us very well last year as our legislative liaison. Ms. Bollinaze and Mr. Brady have stepped up to do policy subcommittee. We look forward to Ms. Bollinaze chairing that committee and welcome Mr. Brady's expertise of working in school buildings to add to our policy discussions and hopefully continue on the path that we've started there. So, thank you very much volunteers on that. Ms. Bollinaze and I will stay on curriculum subcommittee, and as chair and vice chair, Mr. Hopcroft and I will be taking on the finance subcommittee. Mr. Hopcroft is also going to be mentored by Mr. Nixon on the capital planning committee, helps to learn a little bit more about our capital planning process and how that works and get an opportunity to work a little bit more closely with Mr. McPee on that as we move forward. And then, our, I think the only other change is Mr. Nixon's going to continue on with the field management committee, and I think our roles to the parent associations match where our students are in school or have been in school for the most part as we outreach to those. I would encourage, if you have a school that you just reach out, let them know that your point of contact. You may not be able to make every parent association meeting. That's completely understandable, but so they recognize somebody as their school committee liaison if they have some questions for you as well. I don't think there are any other changes to that. Mr. Nixon, did you notice something?
I'm afraid to ask this question, but there is a question mark there on the right-hand column, Retirement Health Insurance Committee?
Ah, yes, so we, they are meeting.
I'm not volunteering, I'm just saying there's a question mark.
It is a good question. They are actually meeting tonight. They had talked about having a school committee role on that or a school committee assigned individual to that committee, and they are meeting tonight, and they are going to have a conversation with us after their meeting this evening to think about that.
Peter Chymets is the chair, is that right?
Yep.
Do we know who the other representatives are? Looking to John Miller, is there someone from FinCom on that? Do we know?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay. I mean, it would be good if, do we need to, are they looking for a sitting member to be there?
So, that is, they are having a conversation tonight. We had reached out to them and asked them what, how they felt that we would be interacting with them and what kind of information they were looking for to determine whether the school committee member might be appropriate or maybe a staff member from the school department might be more appropriate to assign to that.
Or alternatively, if they would welcome a former school committee member with a financial perspective. There are some former, both school committee members and FinCom members that might do a nice job representing that interest as well.
Yes, I think we're waiting to find out what interests that they are looking for before we identify a person for that. But noting that at last town meeting, they had expanded that and were also perhaps looking for, which wouldn't be us, but they had mentioned a teacher or retired teacher and some, some form of school committee representation. So, Mr. Chymets is going to be getting back to me.
Okay, thank you.
Had invited us to their meeting tonight to talk about it with them, I will say, but obviously, we had a little bit of a conflict with that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And that is all I have, just other than to say thank you to everyone in town who participated in Spirit Week. It was lovely to see a Spirit Week centered around the girls' field hockey team. That was a new idea and fabulous and terrific turnout for celebrating Winchester as a community and the high school this weekend, so.
I got some new pajamas, too. So, you know, it was cold, I will say, it was cold.
It was a little, it was a bit chilly.
A little chilly.
A little chilly.
I was a little underdressed.
Yeah. Lovely cross-country cowbell, Mr. Brady, so you'll be happy to know I now have something to cheer my son on at races, but.
Glad to hear.
I only have a couple of comments, actually, so we are, we're in full swing, like we, like we never even left. We have, open houses have been ongoing. In fact, tomorrow night is the high school, Lincoln and Morocco on Thursday night, so we've already had a couple as well. We are still dealing with some staffing shortages, not unlike most places in private and public sector. We have kind of put out an all-call for cafeteria workers. We've taken a little bit of a different approach. We've actually put it in and put it out to parents, hoping that there's a grandparent or an uncle or not, or somebody out there who wants to pick up a couple hours right in the middle of the day and come help us out with that. So, that's, that's one area. We still are having some, or the transportation company, specifically the special education transportation company, still having some staffing issues. Again, not unlike everywhere else. This is a little reminiscent of last year, although much better shape than we were last year. Our general ed buses are generally doing fairly well. I think parents really do like the new app, the app. I've heard good, positive things about that as well. So, other than that, I would also just want to, if Ms. Kirby could just mention that we do have a new SCL director. So, that is the most exciting news, I think, for the week.
Very exciting. Erin Kewen started yesterday, and she's already been in the schools and looking forward to meeting staff, students, and all of you. Erin has over 20 years of experience, the majority of which have been in schools. She started as a social worker, school counselor. She worked as an assistant principal in Cambridge for many years, and most recently, she was a social emotional coordinator in Westwood. So, we're excited to be welcoming her because she understands that this is an ever-evolving role, and her experiences over the years have given her that in the moment and then a bigger view with at the building level and then district-wide. And I should also say that she has her own private practice, and on the hiring committee, we had a social emotional learning coach, and she was just so excited to be thinking that she would be able to collaborate with her. So, I'm sure you will see and hear from her in the near future.
So, that's good news. At the, at your next meeting, we will do, we'll do a personnel update, so the dust will have settled. You'll also hearing about, be hearing about our October 1 enrollment count, which is, as you know, is the official date that we submit our enrollment to the Department of Education. We are, we are up. I'm not going to say how many, but we are definitely up from what we were projecting we were going to be at the, during the budget process last year. So, that's, it's good news. And the other good news part of that is it's, we were able to absorb kids without additional staffing. So, we didn't have any issues around that. So, that's all I have.
So, yeah, excellent. Then we will move on. The next item on our agenda is a consent agenda item. It is approval of minutes from 8:04, 8:30, and 9:13. We did find some minor edits, spelling punctuation such as that, since, since you've received those. So, just assume that any edits like that you see will be taken care of before we officially publish those, and with the committee's consent, we will, we can approve those and move on. Did anyone want to remove any of those from consent?
I would just move to pull the ones from August 30th so I can vote on the two that I actually attended.
I think Mr. Hopcroft had a similar issue.
Yeah, maybe we should take them individually, because I was out for the fourth.
Take them individually.
I'm in the same boat as well.
Okay.
We staggered ourselves.
Would you like to go in chronological order?
That would be great. Would you like to take those?
No, because that's the one I.
Oh, okay. Mr. Hopcroft, would you like to make a motion?
I was not at that one either.
Oh.
Actually, no, forget it.
I make a motion to.
I was at that one.
Well, I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 4th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
30th, who can take that one for me?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 30th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 13th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, we have approved all the minutes, and we will move on to our report and update and action items. And the first thing on that is our McCall eighth grade trip. And our purpose this evening in discussing the eighth grade trip is to hear updated information regarding a culminating eighth grade trip. Mr. Lynn had spoken with the committee in August regarding some logistical and staffing challenges that we were having around this trip. We have been in the past very, very lucky as a district to have two dedicated staff members, Ken Tully and Grace Tripp, who for a long time had provided us with organizing and all the logistical challenges around that trip. I believe both of those educators have retired now? Just Mr. Tully? No. Mr. Tully has retired, and, and he, he had a lot of, let's just say, he had a lot of institutional knowledge, and he had a lot of passion for starting the trip to begin with and keeping it moving. So, I think we are now facing a different time and have to address what that trip is going to look like moving forward. Dr. Hackett, did you have anything to add?
No, I think, I think that's well said. As you might remember from the last meeting, James kind of updated you around just the coordinator piece. He shared with you that once school had started, its first faculty meeting and over the course of the last several weeks, just kind of making it around, talking to staff and trying to see whether or not we could find someone to pick up what is a pretty heavy lift, having done it myself, and that we've not been successful with that for a variety of reasons. I think, you know, COVID is kind of still in the background on some of this stuff as well, but, you know, it is also, it's a significant responsibility. As you know, we have a lot of students. It's a, we are, it's a, it's a big, a big group of kids to bring in any, to any location all at the same time, which also creates some logistical challenges, even when we're trying to work with some companies. So, I, James is here tonight. Really, if you have any, any questions for him, I, as we, as we've talked about, the next steps will be for him to start to work, and I think you've already started that, James, I don't want to speak for you, but with faculty and trying to get some parent input and maybe even student input to see, you know, what we can look to do for our eighth grade students this year for some kind of company trip. So, that's kind of where we are right now, and we just kind of wanted to, we wanted to give you that update, but happy to answer any questions or try to.
James come to the table?
You can come to the big table.
Absolutely.
Good evening.
Hi. Thanks for having me. Yeah, I, I can't really say it any other way. I think Ms. Berstrom said it beautifully and captured exactly what's happening right now. We have three people that are used to coordinate this job, and it is really a full-time position, not just the months leading up to the trip, but also weeks after the trip as well. And two of those folks retired, Pat DeReese as well retired, and we have missed trip. And I just want to reiterate the fact that for the folks that I've talked to and tried to see if they're interested in coordinating a trip, it wasn't, no, I'm not doing it. It was, they're very conflicted. I think everybody knows that parents will be not happy with what's happening here. I know plenty of students will be disappointed as well. So, I know that every single one of the person I talked to really thought and reflected on whether this is something they can do, and they all came back with just, we just can't. You know, we are interested in doing other things for our students. One person said, you know, I'm taking courses, you know, and this is not just something I can take on at this point. And at this moment, I just don't have anybody that has the capacity to take on this, again, a full-time job. So, this is where we are. In terms of planning, I think, just hearing from parents last year, people would like to have a balance between a fun trip, okay, and also something that is related to history and also to civics, because that's part of what we do in DC, and we're very lucky to be in, living in the cradle of democracy. And it's always fascinating to me that folks that live here hasn't really been to Minuteman National Park, has never been to Boston and done the Freedom Trail. And so, those are all opportunities that we can explore. I think I said this the last time that I was here, the culminating part of the DC trip is what we call the farm, and that was in the evening where all the kids gets to be together. And it's very rare that all 350 kids gets to be together at the same time and be able to be with each other. And so, we're hoping to be able to find a venue that can accommodate all the eighth graders at the same time, do something fun and do something that allows them to work with each other. So, we're exploring venues that offer low ropes courses so that it's not just going out and playing games, but also learning how to collaborate with each other and work with each other. So, I also mentioned this last time, the earlier that we can begin exploring these options, the better, because we're hindered by the fact that we are bringing 350 kids. So, there are venues that's available, but if we don't jump on those early, a lot of times they will be gone. So, we have to act pretty quickly and make a decision pretty quickly.
So, Dr. Hackett, I'm understanding that we're saying at this point that the DC trip is not going to go forward.
Correct.
So, it would be giving you the time and space then to be able to look at other alternatives to that. When you say it's a heavy lift, I think sometimes in the community and parents might see the trip as the only part of the job for the staff is involved. What else was the staff responsible for besides just actually going on the trip, which is a lot to ask a staff member in and of itself because it's a multi-day overnight trip away from their family and.
Right. If everybody will recall, those people that was here during our last trip, the planning actually begins prior to the school year starts. So, essentially, the planning for the next year's trip begins right after the first trip, the, the trip ends. So, we're planning in April for the following year. And so, at that point, we're talking about working with the tour company to book a date, right? We're also beginning surveying staff for next year. Do we have enough chaperones, right? And then, starting with the, at the start of the school year, we're now planning for getting the information now to the parents. We're planning for a meeting with the parents so the parents understand what this trip is about and also learning about the finances. And then, we begin the process of collecting the forms, which by itself takes a while because parents, sometimes kids forget to bring things home, parents forget to turn things in. So, we're contacting parents and say, you know, the deadline's coming up. Are you interested in doing this? And if you do, what is holding back? Is it the finances? And of course, then we're now in, around January, when really the heavy lifting starts, because now we're talking about the needs of individual kids. So, students that has specific dietary needs, what is it? You know, what sort of plans we need to put in place? And of course, the, the matching of the roommates becomes something that can be challenging for our staff because it is challenging for some of our eighth graders just not knowing who should I room with? How do I ask that person if, you know, I can be part of that roommate foursome? And so, that will involve not just the three people coordinating, but also our counselors, okay, facilitating the conversation with our students. And of course, then we're coordinating with the MPA to make sure that we have things like snacks that's available, water that's available, right? And our nurses in January is also ramping up, collecting the medications. So, do I have all the EpiPens? Do I have this particular, you know, medical order if a child needs particular medication? And of course, between that time to the start of the trip, somebody inevitably will hurt the ankle, and so now we have to think about, okay, so if this child is no longer mobile, then what do we need to do to make sure that that student is still able to participate in the activities that we will put in place? And of course, then we also have staff members that says, you know, something, I can't go now because X, Y, and Z has happened, and so now we have to find a substitute. So, it's a lot of things, and every year it's a little bit different because the challenges are different every single year. So, it is truly a full-time job for those coordinators.
So, when we say we can't find, we, we talked about not being able to find chaperones, but it's really, we can't find somebody to create a mobile McCall boarding school for a week in DC.
Essentially, yeah. And we haven't even talked about the 25 chaperones, at the very least, that we will need to find as well, and that by itself can be challenging as well. And we typically go with a one-two, one staff to 12 students ratio. We could go with 1 to 15, but we always err towards 1 to 12 because we need backup chaperones in case a chaperone becomes ill or because something happens.
Okay.
Yeah, so it is quite a lot of work that puts into getting it going.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Right ahead, Mr. Nixon.
So, I've always thought the DC trip sort of is doing two things. In a way, we, we talk about it's a culminating trip. It's certainly something folks look forward to, and you talk about the stress about who somebody's rooming with. That actually starts in the fall of sixth grade. It's a common topic at the lunch table, and looking at our two reps, they're nodding. And I want to ask you a question about this trip, too, in a moment. So, but it was always sort of doing two things. So, it's very much rooted in curriculum, but it's also a little bit about growing up. And for some of our kids, it's a first trip, really some distance from home. Not for everybody, but for some, it really is. We've always, for years, had an understanding around the school committee table that for those families who made the decision their child was not going to go to DC, whether it's a financial hardship, which we always were trying to address, or there may have been other concerns, they were not missing out on that curriculum, right? There were some Boston-area events so that they were not sort of missing out. Can you talk for a little bit then about, as you envision this, are you still thinking of doing something in the spring, sort of when the DC trip would have happened? And it's more of a, let's say, robust local trip and opportunity? Or, I just want to be clear, when we talk about culminating, are we thinking about doing something, let's say, more fun and celebratory at the end of the year, and it's a little more curriculum focused in the spring? So, are we talking about one thing or sort of two things?
Yeah, right now, in my head, I'm thinking really two things. I'm thinking around springtime. That'll be the time to start something that's related to histories and civics, right? And the culminating piece will be the last week of school. So, that could be activities that were done in the past, like the cruise, which I felt went pretty well, right? You know, if we're planning on doing something that's related to outdoor adventure, low ropes courses, that could be happening at the end of the school year as well. So, I'm seeing, you're right, Mr. Nixon, and reading-wise, I had to say it's really two parts here.
So, it seems to me that one could, one could take a group and frankly, spend a day at Minuteman National Park, and it will be, it'll be really rich. One could spend a day on Beacon Hill with our delegation. You know, one, you, you could almost sort of do the same thing we were doing before, but, you know, obviously, it's DC, it's, it's Boston, it's not DC. And so, I hope that, I hope you'll kind of keep your mind open as you kind of think about that. I hope I don't put my foot in my mouth. Charlie and Elle, you guys, you're graduating in the spring, is that right? You're seniors.
Yes.
So, if my math is right.
I'm not ready for you to grow, so.
You guys, so these two were actually in the last class that went to Washington DC. And as I sit here, we need to get you better name tags for this.
No.
You know what? That's what I had when I first got here, and you made it.
You know what, that's what I had when I first got here and you made it erasable, because I was in from you weren't sure. You know?
We'd like to introduce you.
Well, I said I wouldn't put my foot in my mouth.
Sorry, sorry. It's a little personal thing.
So I have for some time now sort of felt that, you know, impressions you have, let's say, in eighth grade after the trip, they're very fresh in your mind, but as you get older, you're becoming, you know, adults and you have the benefit of sort of being able to look back on that experience. You might compare it to other experiences you've had as you've gotten older. I, I personally feel like there is an opportunity for, for James, for you and other administrators to, to touch base with these two and some of their peers, if there are others at the high school that want to give some input, that might be able to speak to sort of what their expectations were for that trip, what that was like. And now that you're young adults, you can sort of look back on that and say, okay, what did I get out of that? And it matters to me what you might have gotten out of it, not just from a curriculum point of view, but, but other, you know, life skills and experiences, it can be an inspirational trip for a lot of people. So I think a lot of what you've described about the logistics that go into it are really important. This conversation is important, certainly to explain to parents why it's not happening. But we also, I think, need to be clear to students why it's not happening. And I would really value, and even if the message from you guys is, we're horribly disappointed if we're not going to do DC again, that's still something that I want to hear. But to the extent, you know, our student reps can kind of be a part of the conversation, I hope you'll, you'll consider that and that there's a way to do that, Dr. Hackett.
Certainly, that's something I'll keep in mind. I certainly will, very curious to know, do you still have the sweatshirts that you bought at DC a couple of years ago?
I do. Yeah. If I could add something, I agree with Mr. Nixon a lot here. It is a very culminative experience with somebody with older siblings who had the DC trip. A couple of years before me, it's something that you look forwards to since elementary school. But in my personal opinion, I don't know if I reflect the entire student body saying this, I do believe that it's more of the fact that you're going on a trip with, you know, what, 200 of your friends that you don't necessarily see all at once outside of school, but you're not doing schoolwork. That's the biggest thing. As much as this intended to be an educational experience, it's more of a collaborative experience between, I mean, throughout your entire class. And it's something I definitely remember and look back fondly upon. But I do believe that if possible, like anything to kind of get out of school with all those kids in your class is very valuable.
Yeah, especially, I would say, like the event at the farm, that was definitely something that was like brought up even in sixth grade that everybody looked forward to and having it be like at the end of the trip was kind of just like a last celebration. Like I know we do have graduation like as well and the dance with that, but it was kind of like the first, like, full grade experience that we all had, so.
Yeah. I'm glad you brought the farm again, and that's what we tried to do last year. And the difficulty we ran into last year was because we're planning in January. And one of the things that we definitely wanted to pull up was a time for all sixth, all eighth graders to be able to come together. I know we did a field day, but that's different, it feels different, because you're still on site. So absolutely understand, you know, the, the excitement and the feeling of, hey, we're all together, but we're somewhere else, right? And so that's certainly something that we want to put at the top of our agenda as we're planning on what to do instead of the DC trip. Because over and over again, I do hear from students that the farm, that last night, was by far the most memorable part of the trip. So thank you for bringing that up again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Elle. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Any other committee members, comments or questions? Ms. Bellinay?
I was just wondering if, I know you had talked about the difficulty in the logistics of organizing the trip. And I'm just wondering if the parent association, for example, at the elementary school, the parent association will organize enrichment activities and field trips within coordination with the teachers. There's a trip in the fifth grade to the Minuteman National Parks. And also a project adventure, this is just for one school, I'm not sure of all of them. A project adventure, I think I heard you say low ropes chorus? I don't know if that's like a project adventure ropes chorus challenger chorus. So I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity where maybe the parent association could work on some of the logistics of organizing some of these events?
Right.
That's not to say that I have reached out to a parents' association.
I'll sign you up right now, Karen.
Be careful what you ask for, Karen.
Yeah, yeah. Just wondering.
Is there opportunity? I think there's always opportunity.
It is an eighth grade committee.
Yeah. I think, I think the difficulty we ran to last year wasn't that we needed help to plan these activities, it's the fact that we started too late, right? A lot of the venues, you know, for example, Kimball Farms, that, you know, if you wanted, you actually have to start putting down a deposit now for June. And so it's not necessary that we need people to help us plan, it's really that we, we have to start planning now, right? So last year, there was, there's actually a bunch of venues that we just, we called and they said, absolutely love to have you next year, because we don't have any time available. So in terms of planning, what we're really thinking about is going back to those venues and asking them, now that we're asking you in October, do you, are you able to accommodate us and what does that look like? So in terms of help, you know, I think we're pretty, in pretty good shape, right? But, you know, but it all depends on, you know, exactly what that trip looks like. So there's always opportunities for NPA volunteers to help us with that.
And you're right, like with project adventure and the fifth grade, the, in speaking with them, yes, they're, they're booked through the fall, so they're booking into next, next spring.
Right.
Yeah. So time is of the essence.
And just to remind us all, last year, at this time, we were, we were going to DC.
We were going to DC.
It was, we were planning it, as you remember, we hit a surge at the beginning of the year. We were in masks until March something, I can't remember what the date was when we got out of masks, but then we had another surge in January, then we hit another surge. So the reason why we were late planning last year was because up until that time, the plan was to go to DC. And we made the decision that, you know, it was just too uncertain to do that. So I just wanted to clarify, because I actually had to remember in my head was last, you know...
Right. When did we make the final call? It was all the way in the spring.
Everybody remember the pandemic, even though the president said it's over.
That's right.
Right. So, did you have, it looks like you have something to say, Ms.?
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
So, so I wanted to say, first of all, I, I understand, you know, the decision not to do it and respect that. Yeah, I, I appreciate that you're really looking to, you know, build an experience that's both, you know, bonding experience, but also educational components. And, and we have so much history in our area. I just wanted to make a plug or a mention of a sort of new piece of history, that much like we have a Freedom Trail, just in the last year, Boston Globe columnist Scott Kirsner and historian Bob Crim put together an Innovation Trail, which shows a lot of the things that have been invented here, technology and policy and others. And it brings a lot of diversity into that. So just as you're looking for things, check out Innovation Trail at Boston as well. That's my plug.
Thank you.
So I, thanks, Mr. Hopgoff. So this, what I'm hearing is that we're putting, we're saying, we're setting the DC trip aside for this year, but you're really committed to making sure that this eighth grade class is going to still have opportunities for some kind of civics and history experience and some kind of culminating experience that brings the students together, because that seems to be, from your experience, what we're hearing from the students at the table, that the students are really remembering about that experience and valuing from it. And that you're going to try to recreate that in as many ways as you can. And logistical challenges are easier to do that on a smaller scale than the DC trip, which really requires us bringing a whole school to Washington DC for the week. Is that...
That's correct. And in a way that, again, it certainly is not our intention not to be able to, to run a DC trip. Again, you know, the, the situation is the situation, but in a way that what we put in place could be more inclusive. Because again, we have to remember that typical, a typical class of 350, we have about 45 to 50 students that just opt not to want to go because of a lot of reasons. And if we're doing something that's local and taking away the overnight piece, that we potentially could be including everybody. And so some activity that's similar to the farm, it's not just 300 kids who's on a trip, it's now truly in the entire eighth grade.
Thanks, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you.
We understand change is hard and we thank you for taking it on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sins. You're welcome to stay. You're also welcome to leave. All right, okay.
The next item on our agenda is just a, just to share with the community a little bit, our last two school committee meetings have been workshop meetings that the committee has held with a facilitator as we are trying to work towards developing some school committee and district goals. The school committee held these norms and goal-setting workshops to set broader long-term goals for the school district. And I, we just wanted to share with the community that the six areas that this committee identified that the district is working towards, as well as this committee, are student success, sustainability, diversity, equity, belonging and inclusion, innovation, civic engagement and family support. We will certainly be able to share more about that with the community as we move forward in our meetings in October, as we work with the leadership team to develop clear goals that are based on those bigger, broader ideas.
And just to add, the hope is also that we can boil those six down into something less than six as well, so that we can continue, I think the district's done a great job of staying focused on, you know, a smaller number of goal areas than trying to do everything, because we just know you can't do everything well, so. And leadership team met the other day, I gave, we gave a summary of, of the work that you had done. As I shared with you, they had also had a summer workshop in August. And I'll say this, at this meeting, there's a remarkable amount of similarity in the thinking about what's important for kids in the school system between you as a school committee and the leadership team. So that was, I mean, I, I don't think I was surprised by it, but it was, it's just really nice to see that, because I think that there's a good synergy, but so we're all kind of headed generally in the same directions, as they say, so.
And Dr. Hackett, do we hope to hear more about that October 11th? Are we aiming for the end of October?
Definitely we'll hear more about it October 11th, but likely, yeah.
Okay.
We will provide what we can when, when we're there.
Sounds good. Any members have anything to add before I move on? Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Lynch building project. This is on, I know a lot of school committee members minds as we are moving towards our Lynch project and thinking about where we are headed with that and the debt exclusion override. So the select board and EFPC have set the date to January 7th, 2023, for a Lynch project debt exclusion override vote. Documents are submitted to the MSBA for the project funding and budget approval. That will be, be before the MSBA board on October 26th. Additionally, the EFPC, in collaboration with school committee, will present the project to town meeting, which begins Thursday, November 10th, for approval of the project fund, project funding agreement this fall. We are here tonight, we had hoped to hear from Mr. Haytonite, but he was unavailable for the meeting this evening. And he will be with us for a more detailed update on the building project in the future. But tonight, we thought we'd hear a little bit from Dr. Hackett. And as Mr. Nixon wants to weigh in after Dr. Hackett does his update on where we are on all the these items.
Thank you. You summarized the timeline really well. As you, as some of you are aware, there was discussion around the date of the debt exclusion vote. I don't think that was really in a, in a public conversation very much. So it is what it has always been, which is January 7th, which is a Saturday. It'll be at the high school, as all voting is at the high school. So we met on the 12, I'm losing the date, with the MSBA for the project funding agreement, scope and design, the project scope and budget meeting with the MSBA, the lead team on the, thank you, on the 20th. And reviewed that with the design team, we reviewed with them, they had questions. The budget is, is pretty specific, it's line item. And as you know, and not to go into the details, but, you know, when we talk, when MSBA talks about the grant that we would be provided, it's based on a formula that includes things like determining what's an eligible cost, what's an ineligible cost. There are caps among some of the areas. For example, site work is capped at 8%, which is never enough. There's not a project in, you know, the Commonwealth that's ever been, has never hit that cap. And partly, you know, a lot of the decisions the MSBA makes around those things is because they want to also not fund things like long winding roads with oak line trees as part of the project. I mean, you've got to make decisions as a local community about what's important. So, so among, also in addition to that, there's also a total, there's a total dollar cap on the square footage reimbursement amount or, or grant amount. I'm not remembering, is it 300 and...
300, they will, it's a percentage based on a maximum of $360 per square foot. So if your project is $360 per square foot and the reimbursement is X, you can expect basically X. But if your project comes in at $500 a square foot, that 140 above and beyond the 360 is all on you.
Right. So, so it gets confusing. I mean, I think my experience with this has been people generally want to know, what's, what's the, what number are we voting on? And how much is the MSBA going to support? So those numbers are obviously much more clear. They will be official on October 26th, assuming that the MSBA board of directors approves the project scope and budget at that date, which lines up, I think, fairly well with the town meeting. So we'll have, you know, this, an official number then, although we, you know, we really have a pretty solid idea where we are right now and they know where we are. We've not received any feedback that I'm aware of since the meeting on the 20th around that number. So what else? I want to say this before I forget it, and then we can talk a little bit more about Lynch, but I just wanted to also update the committee to let you know that we're obviously talking a lot and planning around what happens here with Parkhurst and getting ready for Lynch students to be here. As I said earlier, and our numbers, enrollment numbers are up over what we projected they were going to be, which is, which is good news, obviously. We do have some housing developments that are happening, as you know, that will, that will impact Lynch. As we look at what's available here at Parkhurst, I've asked the design team to consider 14 modular units here. It's really, in my view, and the maximum number that this site can really hold, even though we've talked about maybe 16, but at some point, it just becomes too much. So the planning, portable modular...
Excuse me, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Those portable units are for student use?
They are for student use, yes. And I should prefer them, they're modular units.
Right. But they're not modular units for office space?
They are not, right.
Just to be clear.
To be clear, yes.
Maybe, maybe Lynch administration.
We're not even there yet.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, but not central office, will not be a modular unit at Parkhurst.
So the next piece of this conversation is, obviously, we need to be out of here, right? So, and Andrew has been working hard, we've been talking to the high school. We're looking to actually move the business office to the high school sometime this fall, at a time that makes sense in the workflow of a business office for a school department. We don't want to be doing that during budget season, we don't want to be doing that in June, at the end of the year, when we're under the pressure with year-end financial reports. So we're anticipating that move will be happening within the next couple of months or so. Mr. Mahoney, if you were here, would say that he has graciously offered space. I would just remind Mr. Mahoney that I'm the superintendent, but anyway, we do appreciate his cooperation. And so the business office will be in a couple of different locations, I can, we can give more detail a later date. The idea behind that also is that we're not concerned about an enrollment jump at the high school. So we wanted to stay out of the elementary schools with our business office. We wanted to just make this business office move one time. If, if, if my office and Jen and Lori, if we need to move a couple of times over the course of the next couple of years, you know, that's what it is, but we can't pick the business office up and move it a couple of times over the next couple of years. We want that. And then that will also be our official mailing address. of years. We want that. And then that will also be our official mailing address. So we can, we'll have the phone lines set up, so it'll be, you know, it'll be stable for that piece of the operation. We have not yet really gone into detail around, or we have some thoughts around it, but the rest of the office, we're, we're still kind of working on. So, that's where we are right now with that. We're trying to stay away from, at this point, to try and do this without renting space, because, you know, it's, it's a cost we don't want to take on, and we know it's an operating budget cost. So there's a motivation to try to stay away from renting space, but we may have to. We don't, we're not quite there yet. So, that was that. Yeah, so with that-
We've been working with Wincam about moving school committee space.
So we've, we've talked about the possibility using the large group instruction room for school committee meetings. We're working with Wincam on whether that's a possibility. It would be more convenient with a business office there to have the school committee meetings there. And obviously, we need to vacate the space at some point, too. So that might be a possibility, but we're, yeah, we're not-
Still working on it.
We're not there yet. Yeah, we're not there yet.
Let's ask, did you want to talk about community forums, engaging the Lynch and broader community?
So, I don't, I'm going to let Mr. Nixon speak to that, because it's been a little bit up in the air in terms of when, with the, with the shift in conversation around when the debt exclusion vote was going to be, there's been some shifting in terms of what, when the community forums would happen, based on timing and availability. So, but I, do you want me to go up and just pull up the website, so you can see the whole schedule?
On that note, Mr. Hopcroft, so we, we had actually hoped to have a community meeting actually on the 29th this week. Now that's kind of where his were a month ago. But as Dr. Hackett said, there was some question about when the, the vote would be, as well as a couple of other elements of the project that some people kind of wanted to get a little bit, sort of better understanding about. Thank you, Dr. Hackett. So, and actually, as it turns out, so I was not aware of this, of course, we have Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur coming up. Our local temple actually rents the town hall auditorium for the entire week, and I was just not aware of that. So that, we were actually planning on using that space in the morning after drop-off, just like we did for those who attended when we kicked off in November. We got great feedback. That space worked great. Town hall staff, DPW were terrific. Unfortunately, it's just not available. So what we're doing with town hall is trying to identify spaces that we can use in the morning, because we obviously don't want 100 people to show up in a Winchester school. In the evening, we have a couple of options, including the high school, McCall Middle School. It'd be nice if we could have a session at Lynch, although the question is, you know, where do we seat everybody comfortably?
Right.
So it might actually be McCall. And, you know, in the fall, we have curriculum nights and just a whole host of things that are going on. And we're all getting emails about events that are going on. So we're really trying to try to get maybe two presentations in October. The second one, we expect, is going to be more focused, if you will, on town meeting. By charter, the town manager has to have a public hearing on the warrant. This is obviously going to garner a lot of interest and attention. So we're thinking EFPPC may kind of work with Beth Rudolph and just hold a forum, specifically a hearing on, on Lynch. But to be determined in terms of actual dates.
And Mr. Nixon, can I interrupt? To be clear, those community meetings are hosted by EFPPC, correct?
They, well, they're announced by the EFPPC, and if we have a quorum, we, of course, call the meeting to order.
Right.
But we're, it's, we're not there to really do business of the EFPPC.
Right.
It's really geared towards explaining to the community, here's where we are, and taking questions, which is why you like to set it up, is either a hearing or a community forum.
Right, but even though you're a school committee member and EFPPC member, I think it, that's, these are community forums that are not coming out of this committee, but that committee, correct?
That's right. But just as we did in November, as soon as we get dates, I mean, the invitation will go out.
Yep, happy to, right.
School committee, the finance committee, we had some FinCom folks come, the select board, planning board, just, we're trying to lock in those dates. So a couple of things that really happened that are important over the past week. Would you, do you want me to come up there to do this, Dr. Hackett?
Let me see if I can do it.
All right, so I'm going to sort of order you around. So, do you mind, just scroll up to the top of the homepage?
Can I just go to this?
Just-
Yep.
Yep, just tell him where you want him to go.
We're not at the top, there we go.
No touchscreen, I'm working now.
Right, so if you, just slowly scroll down just a little bit. So we've made a few updates to the homepage, so you can stop right there. So we've got some key facts and figures that are coming up. We're now in a position where we can tell the community how big the building is. It's 103,000 square feet. By the way, Charlie and Elle, where'd you go to elementary school?
Ambrose.
Ambrose.
In Ambrose, okay. So you're not Lynchies. Well, you'll still be very interested in this. So we can, we can say with confidence how big this building is. We can say with some confidence when work will begin on the site in the summer of 2023, and we're very confident that we'll be open by the fall of '25, should this pass. This is just an early stab on my part at some key facts and figures. I think parents are interested in, well, you know, how many classrooms? And as we've talked before, we're expanding the preschool. How many kindergarten? How many in grades? You know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And as we'll see in a minute, those latest floor plans that Charlie shared with us, I think, in late August, those were actually submitted to the MSBA. They're quite detailed, and they are here on the website. We'll look at those in a moment.
Yeah, one thing, one more thing to this. I think it's important, given the size of this building, that we also continue to remind everybody that the preschool program is a district-wide program.
Yes.
It is expanded preschool program. So we're talking about seven classrooms and supporting spaces for the preschool. So Lynch Elementary School, without the preschool, district-wide preschool that serves the entire district, would not be this big. It would not, so, I mean, because I think people are going to be surprised by the size. And I think it's important for us to just make sure that we remind everybody, because it's also serving a district-wide purpose.
And another way to think about this is, I think we, many of us inherently want to compare this to VO, because it was our most recent elementary school. For many of us, it doesn't feel like it was that long ago. The Lynch Elementary School is designed for 100 more students, grades K through 5. But in addition to that, the seven preschool classrooms. So this, this is a significantly larger building. The blue banner that you saw when we first kicked off this website is still there. I try to keep it up at the top of the page, so folks who visit the site can understand what's new, what's going on. And Dr. Hackett, if you sort of gently scroll down there, again, I'm going to, I'm going to keep this sort of grid idea moving. I don't update it every month, every maybe couple of months, and there will be another one coming soon, once we approach the board meeting. I had a section at the bottom around the, the project and process that involved kind of a lot of history about all the different options that we explored. I moved that off the homepage, now that this is coming into better focus. That still does exist on the website, just on a different page. The schedule information still remains at the bottom. You're directed to it at the top, if you like it. And of course, I continue to update this, where, you know, what have we completed, what's approved. As you see, their schematic design was submitted to the MSBA on September 1st. That's completed. And we do have now a final actual date, January 7th, for the debt exclusion override. So Dr. Hackett, if you can go up to that pulldown for a minute, and let's go to, actually, let's go to project team and process. This will be very quick. Since you've last seen the project, if you scroll down here, for anybody who's interested, and there are some folks who are interested, there are now direct links to every single architect and engineer and consultant on the project. That's there on the left. So if you click on those links, you don't just get to their company website, you get direct to a lot of the work they're doing in public education. And then if you scroll to the bottom, Dr. Hackett, on this page, I think, yeah, this is where I've, I put the process piece, but also updated it to kind of where we are today and how we got here, but didn't really feel like that needed to be on the homepage. So, Dr. Hackett, if we go next to, how about we go to site? Okay, so as we scroll down right now, we still have that original sort of assessment, which I, I think is helpful for people to understand, because it just speaks to some of the complications, and of course, the well-field parcel. But if you scroll down, again, this has been updated to reflect that, in fact, we went to town meeting, we approved it, and in fact, that transfer has been completed. This is the new information, that, again, I think Charlie has shared with us. And I'll try to keep this current as we move forward. But this is our latest site plan. Dr. Hackett, maybe there's an area, Mike, that'll pick you up. Do you want to just say a few words about some of the latest updates to the plan, particularly on the exterior elements?
Sure. I think probably the most significant, and there was a lot of feedback around the play space, as you see in the front. And, you know, there was a lot of feedback that it would be, maybe make more sense, if, if you remember, the green field space was actually where now we're showing the playground space. So those two were flipped, which I think makes a lot of sense for a lot of different reasons. And as you can see, you know, there's how the site is situated, based on, you have, not much has changed with that in terms of the coming in, entry, entry, exit. But there was a lot of conversation about a lot of those elements, like bus turn radius, deliveries to, to the cafeteria on the side. There's been some, you know, the tremendous amount of conversation. When you boil it down to this, it looks like it was easy. And I'm just here to tell you, it was mind-numbing at times, the amount of detail and questions that, that were addressed.
One thing I'll just also note while this image is up, is for anybody who was watching the select board meeting last night, or if you remember from Springtown meeting, the, our town manager put forward an article to get the process started with tool design. They're a traffic engineer who made the recommendations, for instance, for the redesign of Washington Street, Main Street, around McCall, when we did that expansion. And they've charged them to take a look at not so much this project, this site, but the broader sort of neighborhood and the, the roads that, that service this, this project, and to make some recommendations. So there were some initial suggestions that were coming out of that last night. But I was, I was pleased to get some feedback on the bridge. So if you don't mind, Dr. Hackett, if you just highlight there on the right, you see that red kind of diagonal element. So the thought behind this, this is a pedestrian bridge. If you're familiar with, there's a wooden bridge that, down off of Mystic Valley Parkway, that allows you to get to the gin playfield, that's sort of nestled into the woods. This is an idea that we've been kicking around from the very beginning of conceptual design, that we feel like would really be a helpful element. Because if you come then just a little bit south, you see that bridge right there. Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Those of us who've either been Lynch parents or Lynch preschool parents, you will remember, that's, that's not a very pedestrian-friendly place to be. It's two-way traffic. There is a sidewalk for kids, but it's actually on the south side of the bridge. So it's to the bottom of the plan. What we're doing here is now we're putting Lynch on the other side. That makes that even a little more sort of awkward. And by necessity, then, we've got kids on foot crossing a lot of traffic. So I was pleased last night that the engineer at the select board table said she was aware of this, and they, you know, they liked this as an idea. So I look forward to trying to kind of bake this idea a little bit further, because that, I think, would just encourage more walkers to Lynch and simply be safer. So, thank you, Dr. Hackett.
I like that the ghost Lynch is still up there. Ghost Lynch is still up there, too. The previous Lynch, if you want to put, if parents want to put it in space.
Yep.
I noticed the red outline is still there, so we can see where the footprint of the original Lynch was.
Yes, yes. If, well, let's see, what's next on the pulldown? So let's go to design. Sure, let's do design real quick. And if you scroll down, so these are the plans that, these have been up here for a while, since Charlie last came and spoke to us, I think, in, was it August 4th? These plans are substantially unchanged. There's a decent amount of detail, if anybody wants to blow, blow, blow them up. And we're describing here kind of the key program elements by floor. The kids are sort of aggregated youngest to oldest, as we go from entry. So you've got pre-K and kindergarten, and then older grades as you go up the building, with some description of how we envision that, you know, the building will function. If you scroll down a little bit more, as Charlie develops some more images, I mean, some of these you see on the film roll on the homepage, some of these you don't. They're, they're, they're newer pieces. So I'm going to continue to kind of keep this fresh. I won't have more than four or six images here. I mean, you can expect this to just kind of change over time. And then I think if you scroll down to the bottom, I don't think, no, I didn't have much new here. Again, this is sort of where you get into that, like, historical record. So if somebody, and I'm going to make this really clear, you know, okay, this was in March, you know, this is what we were doing three months ago, six months ago. So if somebody wants to understand how we got here from there, all you got to do is go back and read. There you go, March 22, and then there was one. So there's sort of, you know, a discussion about what the process was, in a little more detail. But again, try to keep that down at the bottom.
Hey, Mr. Nixon, can we put draft over that one on the left, so that people realize that that's not necessarily the, all the way down, Dr. Hackett, that replacement option N5, up a little bit, could we, could you do some kind of draft mark over that, so people realize that's not the plan necessarily, that that's still in motion? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. You know, if, I don't know if you can see through the, the high back of the chair. It says at the bottom, February 7th, conceptual.
I know. Is there's any way to make that a little bit clearer to people? Because I worry that when they see, they wonder which one's the actual plan.
That's good feedback.
I don't even think it's, maybe, maybe it's a different term than draft, because that would imply-
Yeah, whatever.
Like-
Initial concept.
Something kinder than rejected, but-
Well, or just concept, maybe.
Early concept.
Early concept.
Early concept.
Yeah.
That's helpful feedback. I appreciate that. Let's see, if we go to the next pulldown.
Because it looks different than the, even the plan you have on the other page.
There's no, there's not much different on the swing, swing space piece that will be updated soon, although it, you know, it's current as of, you know, following town meeting. So as Dr. Hackett said, there are plans to bring in modular classrooms here. So we're going to be able to provide a little more information, and Charlie is preparing some graphics for us for this. So that will be updated soon. But there's a lot of information there. And then we're going to go to, if I can, we'll go to the costs page. Thank you. Okay, so this has really been substantially updated. So the format is familiar to those of you who've been watching the website. As John Miller leans in carefully to study this.
My eyesight is bad.
John's going, John's going to catch me if I made a mistake, and I hope you do. Okay, so the intent here is at the top. It's a very simple summary. There is construction cost, but we have a total project budget. We have an expected MSBA project grant. That's what we get back, and then we kind of have a net, if you will, and not to exceed. So if we max out our project budget, and we, we do have, like, something in writing now from the MSBA, expecting a vote, we have an idea what that grant will be. What we don't have yet, and Mr. Mucci and Mr. Too Good and others over at town hall are working hard on this, is we want to be able to share, just as we did for the high school and for the McCall expansion, what's the impact on me as a property owner in Winchester? So what would be the tax impact, you know, per thousand or $100,000 valuation? In order to calculate this, the select board, of course, they need to know the total project budget, even though, so let's say right here, total project budget, we're never going to spend that. We're never going to spend that. The funny thing about working with the MSBA, they require us to put in that number in the project funding authorization. Even though, once the project starts and we start submitting project invoices, they will then begin cutting us checks. And it happens very quickly. There's something called a pro-pay system, gets processed within two weeks. So once the invoices start coming, and we get them flowing back to Boston, then we're going, the money's going to start coming back to us as reimbursement. So the consequence of that is, by the time we finish the project, if it's around 94 million and we get 17 back, obviously, we never borrowed the full 94. So-
So, can I just clarify? So when you say that, what you're saying is that with our local dollars, we are not going to spend the total project budget?
That's right. And so, so, and, and we didn't do it on VO, we didn't do it on the high school. So what we have to, what we're working on with town hall is to try to find sort of a succinct way for everybody to understand that. But remember, in terms of working with bond counsel and with the consultants that work with our treasurer and comptroller, we still need to be able to say to the town, well, if, if you borrowed 94 million over, and it needs to be a conversation, is it 20, 25, 30 years? What's the interest rate? Thank you, Jerome Powell and the board. So that just went up by, you know, basis points a few days ago. Where do we think this, how, how is this really going to impact taxpayers? We don't know that yet, and we're working on it.
Okay, on that point, can you publish both what the property tax assessment would be for the 94, 95 million dollar total, but also do one that says, you know, our net is likely to be this, and so the, the net that taxpayers are likely to have to pay would be a different number?
Well, maybe let's have that conversation as the information comes in, and we certainly could do that. I want to keep it simple. And what I will do is maybe share with you what we did at McCall, and I'd love to get your feedback on that. Winchester is well-represented in the medical sciences and in the financial services industry. So there are a lot of people in Winchester who follow this very carefully, and this website is a perfect example of the tightrope one walks, because, you know, you can almost be too simple and you're not addressing really good questions. You can also get really too weedy and sort of people's eyes glaze over.
Mr. Hopcroft, are you asking that question because you're, what you want the point or the, what you would be showing with that is if we did not have the MSBA grant, then this is what the taxpayer would be paying on a $100,000 valuation versus with the grant, this is what they'd be paying?
What I, what I heard was a slightly less useful number, from a taxpayer's point of view, to, to know that, that, oh, here's a burden that I'm going to have to pay, minus some amount that's hard for me to calculate, that's being reimbursed by the state. So I'd rather know, like, at the end of the day, what am I going to have to pay? And that was, that was very, very, I started from.
I mean, the calculation really is going to be based on what we think our net project cost is going to be bonded over whatever term the select board opts for, plus input on interest rates. I mean, that's the way we've done it in the past. Can, can I ask you to scroll down just a little bit more, Dr. Hackett? So remember, this, this is the real dumbed-down summary. Okay. As, as you may remember from the earlier version of the website, we were making a distinction between construction costs. So what is construction cost? It's the stuff. Excavation, foundation, envelope, mechanical walls and site work. We've got some information on that as well. So the construction cost for the new Lynch, that building across from the existing, is just over $65 million. But that doesn't include the cost of abatement and demolition of the 1960s school, nor does it include some money we're putting, about half a million dollars into- half a million dollars into Parkhurst. We're carrying that as a construction cost because that's really more of a permanent investment, if you will. So we, just as we did back with VO, we put about $1.1 million into this building at the time, and that's value that we carry on for years, right, for any future use. So that 500 is money we're spending on this building, and we keep that value. That does not reflect the modulators, and we'll talk about that in a moment. So one can think then of our sort of total construction cost for this, all three pieces, at a little over $68 million. Frank, if you scroll down just a little bit lower, and this was, again, previously on the website, then there's a paragraph that kind of talks about, okay, so what are project costs that are not included in construction costs? And there's a list of those, and they include architectural engineering fees, contingencies, owner-provided items, what we call in the industry FFNE, is fixtures, furnishings, equipment. It includes educational technology, testing, and so forth. Our project management fees, of course, are not included in construction cost. And as a rule of thumb on many projects, some people like to say, well, you take the construction cost and you add 30%, and that, you should be in some sort of ballpark. And that's really not a bad way to think about it. I haven't done the math here, but that would be somewhere in the ballpark.
So when Mr. Nixon earlier referred to sometimes getting weedy, he and I would have a bit of a disagreement depending on the audience for this, or an agreement, understanding that, you know, most parents are likely not going to necessarily understand, you know, the cost centers here. I mean, I think most parents are going to want to know the question of how much does it impact my taxes, right, and what's in the project. So this is a great resource because it archives, not only does it show where we are, and you can see the progress, and it gives the level of detail that truly anybody, I can't imagine they'd want more detail than this. But as we think about talking to the public about this project, I think very specifically about parents at Lynch, because that's really the audience for me, as well as staff, I'm likely not going to have this conversation with them. I would likely stay, you know, at a higher level with it.
The top of the page.
At the top.
Yeah. So the top of the page is your, is your real quick picture. And ironically, I look at this list, this, believe it or not, is a real executive summary. This comes from an MSBA spreadsheet with 147 lines or something in it, and it would, I'd need a new prescription when I try to read it. So there's an accounting here for the key things that then contribute to the total project budget. Once again, we're saying, but we take away from that an expected MSBA reimbursement, and then we come up with, again, if we spend every penny and we get the full grant, which we expect we would, a not-to-exceed of 77.1. If you scroll down just a little bit more, Dr. Hackett, then just a brief description about what is net for somebody that sort of doesn't get it. This is why that partnership with the MSBA is so important. I must tell you, there are residents in Winchester that go to the MSBA website. I know they do because they check it and they ask me questions about what's on the website. So this was an important sort of paragraph to put up here. The MSBA, last week, two things happened. The good news is they actually increased our reimbursement rate. We win it, we did not think we were going to get, you see there, 36.21%, we were lower than that. Well, the good news is it went up. The bad news is that percentage is based on a substantially lower eligible project cost. There were some things that they did not feel were really going to be eligible. So, and they did not cancel each other out. We actually wound up with even a slightly smaller, you know, project grant from them. So this.
That's why it's important to think about it as the project grant when we're talking to people, because that's not of the total cost.
Yeah, so, yeah, exactly. So this is why.
But you can't back into the math with the percentage.
No, you cannot.
You know, this is why we're not leading with, we're getting 36%. In fact, Mr. Miller, in EFPPC meeting, when I think we were just talking about where we thought it was going to come in on, John said, wait a minute, at that point, 35% or whatever it was. You know, John was saying, 35% of what? I mean, you know, you really, you have to go through this exercise, and at the end of the day, it's not 36% of the gross.
Of the project.
It's considerably lower. It's closer to 20.
It's 17 and a half million.
Yeah.
Right, 17 and a half million.
So this is simply an explanation of that, so that the community understands that it, there are limitations, just as Dr. Hackett said. There are things that are ineligible. There are things that are capped at a percentage basis, and there are things that are capped on a dollar basis. So, you know, like I said, there's a lot of work that's been done here. What's really missing is, what's it going to cost me? And I'm really hungry to get that information up there soon. And I think the Select Board and management are close to making a decision. I know management's working hard.
I was going to say, I spoke to Mr. Too Good today. He said they're working on those numbers right now.
So our goal is not to wear you out tonight.
Right.
The goal, our goal is not to wear you out tonight, but just obviously show you where we are and talk about where we are. But, you know, there is also going to be, we need to have a conversation about also who's sponsoring this and how we want to approach that. I think, you know, my hope would be that we can get Charlie in, maybe even someone from Hill, maybe at the next meeting, but at some point in October, where we can hear from them, but also see some boards and go, if you want to go a little bit more in-depth in terms of what's in and what's not in the project.
So, and I invite any committee members who want to dig a little bit deeper into this. Mr. Nixon's provided a ton of information here on the Lynch 2025 website, but I'd like to stop for a minute and just make sure that people don't have any questions about anything that we've talked about yet on the board. Sorry, Mr. Miller, we'll keep it to the board when we have questions here.
I'm just going to make a suggestion.
Do any of the board members have questions about what we've done so far? Okay, Mr. Nixon, want to wrap it up for us?
Well, do you want to bring up the draft language from Ms. White, that we can have a discussion about that tonight?
I would really want to do that, but at this moment right now, I can't do that because I don't know where it is. So let me grab it and send it to myself.
Okay. So that'll take a couple of minutes. So, and I think that that was your segue, right, to sort of talk about this? So the fall warrant closes soon.
Why?
You okay?
This was my question. So glad you're.
So the fall warrant is closing soon. Management has been working on sort of three things to support the Lynch project. I'm going to sort of give them where. The first is, and particularly relevant to the school committee, in the spring of, I think, '20, the school committee sponsored an article seeking $1.5 million in funding for the feasibility study, which is everything we've been doing, like, literally up until September 1st. And some of you will remember, I think, the night we voted that, we added, I think, $200,000 to it because we were just concerned if it was really going to be enough money. Town meeting was very supportive. Well, the good news is, we haven't spent close to that. We've spent under $1 million. So there's over half a million dollars unspent from that feasibility appropriation. On the advice of counsel at the time, we had a very narrow description of what that money could be used for, specifically for the feasibility study. Because the debt exclusion override will not happen until January 7th, there is an opportunity to keep our design and management team going if we can use the money that's still available in the kitty from feasibility. And this doesn't mean we're increasing the project budget. We're not spending money twice. It just means that that money is available, we could start using it, if in fact, the eligibility, the description of what it could be used for was a little more broad.
A little bit broader.
Let's put it this way. Many communities that work with the MSBA, we have subsequently found out, have much more, let's say, vague language when it comes to funding feasibility. So they're able to do exactly what we would like to do. When I say we, should frame this right, EFPPC. So Mr. Miller, Dr. Hackett, and I, we've had conversations around the EFPPC table. Our OPM advises us, would recommend we continue to keep the project going. Without using those additional resources, Charlie and his team have to sort of sit on their hands and stop until the override passes. We'd like not to have to do that. So Meg White and others at Town Hall have had conversations with the MSBA and their legal counsel. They've worked with our legal counsel to draft some language that basically seeks to go back and kind of rewrite that article that was previously approved and expand the eligibility in terms of scope. The EFPPC is going to be voting on this Monday night, and I expect it will be strongly supported. And so we wanted to make you all aware of that. Because the original article was a school committee article to begin with, it has been suggested it would be appropriate for the school committee to co-sponsor. I do think that that would be appropriate. It's not on an agenda to vote tonight, nor do you have language in front of you, but I wanted to make you aware that it's sort of been through the process with the MSBA, the EFPPC, Town Council, and so forth. And as I said, EFPPC is going to vote it on Monday. So I think it would be welcome if at our next meeting, the school committee would be willing to entertain some sort of co-sponsorship for that. The one caveat, I think it's important to say, is we would be spending that money at risk because if the project should not be approved, then we still have to pay the bills for Charlie and the OPM. But we all have, you know, great confidence, there's support for the project. It's a good way to just keep us going on schedule.
And so, Mr. Nixon, I also want to be clear, this warrant language just came to us yesterday. So.
Just came from the MSBA, actually, on Friday. I think I saw it Monday.
Yep. And that's when I received it. So we wanted to make sure you had time to look at the language around these warrants that we're asking the committee to co-sponsor. So Mr. Nixon has provided us with the language, and we'll drop that in the packets for you, and then be able to look at that for the next, a vote at the next meeting.
Could I just make one observation, which is that up until you telling us about this, this project has been so condensed, and the timelines, you know, just, I mean, Dr. Hackett has talked to, how much stuff is being done in a matter of weeks. It used to be many, many months. So it's, if this opportunity is something that the committee ends up moving forward with, it's kind of breath of fresh air since it's going in the other direction, buying us a little bit more time to keep things going. So I look forward to the conversation on that.
And can you just explain, what's the consequence if we don't have that funding and they can't continue their work? How much time is that going to add on to the end of the project?
A lot.
Well, because part of it, it's impacted by when the MSBA board meets.
Yes, good point. So there's about, close to 600, it's about $590,000. This is about how much money we're talking about. We've spent 900 something out of the 1.5. The proposal isn't to then sort of not necessarily spend all of that right away. It's simply so that Tape and their team can just sort of keep going and keep invoicing. And in order to do that, we just have to have those dollars available. So I can't monetize it for you because I haven't seen a cash flow, but I think your question, Seamus, was also about time.
Yeah, it's about time. How much if we're not able to do that.
It throws us off, I mean, I think it would throw us off the MSBA timeline, and because their executive board eventually has to prove every, kind of every step of the way, and they only meet four times a year.
Every two months, I think, at least. Well, they don't meet more than six times a year.
And they only deal certain business on, in certain meetings, like, welcome eligibility will be one meeting and all that. So it's more, it would be more, it's more complicated to figure out how much because I just don't know where we would fall in their timeline.
And to Mr. Nixon and Dr. Hackett, I think, just to reiterate, I think many of the other towns, their feasibility studies, the warrants that they put forward are usually more open-ended. We made ours pretty specific, which is great for communicating to the voters exactly what we were going to use it on, but in general, they're sort of more open-ended to allow for this use, and we just didn't do that.
Typically, being really specific about project scope has served us well because we have capital projects that come in under budget, and then you get what we call turnbacks, right? So a project is finished, the project gets closed out, and every year, capital comes to town meeting and says, we closed out eight or nine projects. Now we have all this money. This is a little bit different because if we're moving forward, there's no turnback. We just sort of keep going.
So the other two articles.
So the second, the second element, so that first one's pretty easy. The second element is actually the actual project funding agreement, which has to go forward to town meeting. Town meeting is the body that authorizes specifically the borrowing and the dollar amount. That's different than the ballot question, which is the third thing that management is working on. A debt exclusion override question that we all vote on doesn't actually include the number. That actually is a conversation that happens on the floor of town meeting. So the project funding agreement is very straightforward language. It's virtually, you know, cookie cutter stuff that comes from the MSBA, as it was at the high school and VO. I would just say to the board that, to remind you all, our statements of interest to the MSBA are submitted jointly. It's the school committee and it's the Select Board. My memory is that on VO and the high school, the project funding agreement was co-sponsored between the school committee and the Select Board. I can't be 100% sure about that, but that's my memory, and I will spend a few days sort of researching that. The Select Board hasn't yet voted any articles for a fall town meeting regarding Lynch. I hope they will soon. EFPPC will. So EFPPC will be a sponsor of the project funding agreement language. Again, it would be appropriate for the school committee to co-sponsor as well. And again, that's very, that's very scripted stuff. It's really, it's sort of about what is the dollar value, and as Dr. Hackett said, we worked through town staff with that last week. So that would be another element, I think, for the school committee to weigh in on and support, I would hope, at our next meeting. The third item, which does not require any action on our part, in fact, it is squarely in the lap of the Select Board, is the ballot question itself, which I hope by the time we meet next, that can be shared because I think it will be pretty well focused.
Should be.
And again, very straightforward. I mean, the MSBA kind of has a playbook on what this language should look like, but it would be helpful for the school committee to see what that looks like. So that's it. One, two, three. Feasibility study, reappropriation, sponsored by the EFPPC, hopefully school committee will support. Then you have the feasibility, excuse me, project, project funding agreement for the main Lynch. That's number two. That's the 94 million. EFPPC will be sponsoring. I hope the school committee and Select Board will as well.
Questions?
What's the timing for the warrant?
It closes early next week, and management, you know, has a few days to, they sort of go through, edit some things, check with legal counsel, bond counsel before it goes to the printer. So I think there's a week or something like that to.
So I've asked the question, now I'll double-check, but I've asked the question about the timing of your next meeting, which is October 11th, and.
We were told that was fine.
It's fine, in terms of the print date.
Okay.
Yeah. But I want to double-check now that you said that.
And Dr. Hackett, maybe if you look in your email, perhaps you could forward that language to the.
I think what I'll do is, because it is buried in an email, I think, pull it out and put it in a Word, in a Google Doc, and then I'll share with.
Perfect. That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I only shared it with Ms. Bergstrom and Dr. Hackett, like, yesterday, and it was hot off the press.
Yep. We appreciate seeing it quickly. Any other questions from members of the committee about the Lynch project moving forward?
To the extent people are looking sullen around the table at cost, can I just try to be half-full for a minute and say, raw materials are largely returning to their pre-pandemic levels. I also saw a report today that the cost of lumber as a commodity is down 70% from where it was at the peak during the pandemic. It's come down 30% I think in the last quarter. Obviously, there are other things that are going on globally and nationally. There are expenses that we feel in our own pocketbook at home. There are expenses that affect the overhead of contractors and subcontractors that cannot be ignored. But to the extent, and this is sort of where it all started, when raw materials just spike, that has sort of a shock effect throughout the industry. And I am hopeful that as we move forward on this, we're going to start to see some moderation. On that cost page that Dr. Hackett was on, and we didn't go through all the detail, but this is maybe an important point to make about contingencies, right? We have a 10% design contingency that's actually buried in the construction cost. And then in addition to that, we have a construction contingency. And based on the advice of our two cost estimators, we don't have one, we have two, working on this project. One works for the OPM, one works for the architect. They're carrying, I think, 5% escalation to the bid date. So there are a number of things that we're doing that the project team feels is done from, let's say, somewhat conservative point of view because we obviously, if we come in over budget, we don't have a project.
And I will just also say, had a meeting with area superintendents the other day, and there was a superintendent who has a project that is coming out of the ground, and they had $20 million of a budget. So it's been fully designed, it's coming out of the ground, and because of the market, and because of when they estimated what it was going to cost, they hit it exactly the wrong time. So based on that, I'm hoping we've hit it exactly the right time, that, you know, maybe we're high on the estimates, maybe the bids come in better, but obviously, you know, it's a vol the market. But, so that's, there was another superintendent, actually, who's also has a project that's currently over budget in design, that they've got to go back and make some significant changes to. So.
So hopefully, by the time we go out to bid, maybe some of that may have settled down as well.
Right, right.
If anything, the concern that I have, and I think Mr. Nardone has, don't know about Mr. Miller, but, Dr. Miller, excuse me, but there is certainly concern about supply chain impact and long-lead items. Remember, we funded all that work at Morocco?
Right.
So we've had to postpone. So we've had to postpone the electrical work by like nine or 10 months just because we couldn't get the stuff here in time. So that was a big part of our conversation around project delivery method. Were we going to go design, build, were we going to do CM at risk? Was there a way to pre-purchase some really heavy equipment, switch gear and so forth? So I think that's really where we're going to continue to be watching very carefully and look for some help from the OPM.
Thanks very much. Thanks for the very thorough update. The committee is ready to move on. I will move on at this time then. I'm actually going to ask the committee if we can hold the vote for the next meeting as well. I need to clarify with the town clerk which of these positions, I know for sure EFPBC does, but which of the other positions actually have to be voted to reappoint. So I'm just going to ask if we hold on that one. And then that brings us to our anticipated agenda items for our next meeting. There is a policy subcommittee report that I expect may be happening by the next meeting. Enrollment personnel and program updates will also be happening at the next meeting. We will have those October 1st enrollment numbers in. It will be good to get a look at those as we are in our pandemic recovery and see where we are having steady growth and where, just where we are with all of those numbers. I've been notified by Ms. Conley that we will have some WIFI grants for acceptance at the last meeting. It's always interesting to hear what our students and our teachers are interested in applying to WIFI. And Ms. Conley also, if you haven't been able to, if you didn't notice it in your email, has invited school committee members to Author Fest that is coming up in October. She provided the schedule for all the elementary schools, the middle school and the high school. And there was one date that was off, that's separate from the others, so if you want to attend to any of those, she welcomes you to do so. I thought I just mentioned that while we were talking about WIFI. There was something else we were just talking about today here that I did not write down for our next meeting. Go ahead, Karen.
What you were just talking about?
Besides the, we know we have the warrant articles. Was there something else?
Personnel report, personnel.
Personnel.
Yeah. Thought I missed something, but maybe I didn't.
Oh, it's here.
Future meeting dates, October 11th and October 26th, the second and fourth Tuesdays in October.
Can I just clarify that? So, so it's the 11th and the 25th?
25th, 25th.
Okay.
11th and 25th. Thank you. And that is all we have for this evening. Did any committee members have any other information, reports from subcommittees?
Can I just follow up on that traffic presentation to the select board last night and sort of impacting the Lynch neighborhood? That was kind of a first pass, so no action was taken and the engineer has a lot of work to do to wrap up her report. Ms. Rudolph's recommendation was to go to TTEC, our traffic advisory committee, in a couple of weeks, get their input, as well as to reach out to the Lynch community with sort of what those recommendations are, get their input, which I think is really smart. And then they would also look to bring that to both the school committee and to the EFPBC. So there'll be some time for that to play out, but there were a lot of interesting recommendations.
And I think that's a good opportunity for us to refine the process on that since the 2018 directive that whenever we did a school building project, it would then trigger a traffic engineering study following our VO project where we actually had some traffic work to do following with Sacred School. And then we were able to talk about that around the McCall project, which I think actually had some great impacts on that area and neighborhood. So we're hoping that we can work with the select board collaboratively to figure out how to arrange that around the Lynch project as well.
Yep.
Can I ask just one question? Is that report going to be available on Lynch 2025 or on some other place for people to read?
We don't own it right now, but we can see if we can.
First of all, it doesn't even exist.
Right.
I mean, and I think, to really answer that question, I think there needs to still be some conversation about, well, a conversation that happened at the select board table last night was around whether it can or cannot be sort of considered part of the Lynch project meeting through the MSBA. Our understanding, and I think we said this back in November, was that it cannot be. It, they would fund things that were sort of immediate on the project, you know, an immediate adjacent robe, curd cut, et cetera, that would be no problem. But something that sort of goes beyond would be considered not part of the project's scope.
But I think they were just having an initial conversation on information that they just wanted to see.
But to answer your question, I mean, we would just need to be clear, if it's a part of the project, yes, it would sort of be there, but it, there is a page up here on the website on traffic and safety and if you click on it, there is a banner that actually speaks to that select board policy to let the public know that that is an investigation that would be happening. The board, of course, talked about it last night. So if that's not part of the project, so long as it sits somewhere at like Winchester.us, I'd be happy to put a link to it for anybody.
And also to go full circle, because now that it's come up, the MSBA will be asked, I'm sure, directly about that question about the, what, where, can that, can the traffic warrant be included?
Where and how?
Included in the question and how, so that, you know, they can make a direct, they can hear directly and get a direct ruling on it.
So with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So do we need a motion to go to executive session?
Yeah, I was going to...
We need to come back in public session.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the WEA because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee and to discuss strategy with respect to negotiating non-union administrative contracts because to do so, an opening session would be detrimental to negotiation. The committee will only reconvene in public session for the purpose of voting on a contract agreement.
So moved.
Take them.
And I need a roll call. Karen? Ms. Bollene?
Hi.
Mr. Nixon?
Hi.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Hi.
Mr. Brady? Your votes, I vote as unanimous and we are adjourned to executive session.
And Charlie and Elle do not have to hang out for us to come back if you don't want to.
No, they do not. And thank you for joining us.[1019.62]
Sure, the evaluation MOA. We came together, the joint committees, um, with the union and came up with an evaluation instrument and process that we need to use for the 22, 23 school year.
So, I'd be happy to make a motion unless you're looking for any discussion. Uh, I moved authorize the Chair, Ms. Bergstrom, and Superintendent Hackett to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Winchester Education Association for the use of revised evaluation instruments as described.
Second.
And all in favor, Ms. Bollinas?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous.
Uh, secondly, uh, as I mentioned, actually, in the public session at the beginning, that we are, we have been ha- having a hard time with some staffing categories, food service has been one of them, uh, in looking at the market to see how, you know, how are we? How competitive are we? Um, we realized that we really need to increase, um, what we were paying. So, um, I am recommending, um, that the committee consider and approve an adjustment to food service, uh, to bring them to fifteen dollars an hour.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinas?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. I believe that is it for this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion and we are adjourned for the evening.
Thank you, WinCam.
Very much.
Thank you, WinCam. Thank you. 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 Thank you.